Trustees attending remotely? Check. Check.
Hello.
Trustee.
Hi there, yes.
Check again. Trustees attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence. Could you please turn your cameras on for a minute?
Already on, Chair.
Okay, I can't see that, but okay. Trustee Kelly, are you there?
Oh, hi, yes.
Thank you, thank. Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Item 1.1, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father and the National Anthem. By now our staff, please lead us with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As together today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's our honor and respect.
For direction.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Director Klein, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father and National Anthem?
Thank you, Chair. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Draw us forth, God of all creation, draw us forward and away from limited certainty into the immense world of your love. Give us the capacity to even for a moment taste the richness of the feast you give us. Give us the peace to live with uncertainty, with questions, with doubts. Help us to experience the resurrection anew with open wonder and an increasing ability to see you in the people of Easter. Please join me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come.
Thank you, Director Klein. Motion's arising from in-camera, there were no motions arising from the in-camera session that will need a vote. We move on to our next order of business. Rule of the agenda, do we have any additions, deletions to the agenda? And do trustees want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Can we have the... Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'd like to remove items 6.1.2.3 and 6.1.2.4 from the agenda, from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Vice Chair, and I want to ask for an item to be made into an action item. No?
Sorry, Chair, my hands up as well. Sorry. Sorry.
Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, through you, I'd like to ask for 6.1.2.2 to be removed.
6.1.2.2?
Yes, please.
Okay. With this, I will hand the gavel over to Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, I would like to request the notice of motion that is item... Can you scroll down, please? The notice is at item, notice of motion, which is at 6.2.4, which is an amendment to a motion previously adopted for AP and IB program to be moved as an action item. Madam Chair, this will have to be unanimous.
So do we have a mover?
I move it.
Okay. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay. Trustee O'Herns-Jonata, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I speak?
Can you let me just get to that part? Would you like to speak to you?
Yeah, just a quick thing, there's going to be no discussion, debate. I just want to... I'm asking for this item, which I moved in the past to be brought as an action item because the growth of the AP program and the tremendous demand in Milton, that we were not aware when the motion was put forth, was not foreseen at that point in time. And so I've shared some information with trustees. This is a good problem that we have, and the intentions of the amendment are to give staff the ability to be agile and start planning for the 2024, 25 year, accept new registrations, and most importantly, inform our parents who have submitted their registrations for this. So I'm hoping the trustees will support the growth of the program in Milton and help in converting this notice of motion to an action item. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair Duarte. So in order for us to add this, I'll need to take a vote to have this item added to the agenda. So I would like to do that, I'll do that. Do you have a sheet? Right. Okay, so if you're in favor of adding... Sure, go ahead.
Are there any questions allowed for Chair Duarte?
Debate, is there questions allowed? Ask a question, you can ask a question, go ahead.
Just wondering, so that's the school, the school being... Yeah. Been growing for quite some time, we've heard from staff about how the population is a growing student population of the school. Like, why did we not foresee any of the increase for the program? It's had such a big, huge success, we've had many presentations about it, well, really last year. How did we miss that growth?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, yep.
So, my amendment is based on a motion which was previously adopted. Okay, your question, I'll reserve it for staff, but I can talk to the motion because the motion, when it was written at that point in time in 2021, there was a, all the courses are to be destreamed. And at that point in time, I said, no, this is a speciality program, people want AP and IB. So we're not going to destream, we're going to leave the program as it is. But we did not foresee that the program would grow and expand. And Milton has broken all records of growth in the province, and that's the reason why we are back to the table that motion, just to amend and correct a few words and be agile and allow staff to do the job which we all want. We want more enrollment, so that's the only reason.
So what I could offer, Trustee Kennedy, is if if the board is in favor of adding this to the agenda at that time, when we get to that item, we could certainly, obviously, open it up for debating questions at that point, as I'm sure there may be other questions about it, specifically to the one that you just asked. So I can also offer that as well, in the event that we're able to get this onto the agenda as an action item. Is that fair? Does that work?
Sorry, just a point of order, is it a...
A point of order, is it a point of...
Clarification, clarification. Is this a majority, or is it two-thirds, or is it 100%? Or how does it work? Madam Chair, this is unanimous.
Yes, it's unanimous vote. So again, I would just offer to my fellow trustees that the vote is to add this item as an action item onto the agenda, and if at that time you have questions or debate, whatever that might be pertaining specifically to this motion, you'll have ample opportunity at that time to address that. So I'm going to go ahead, do you have some? Oh. Thank you. O'Herns-Jonata?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, if, because we need unanimous, if this item does not get pulled out as an action item, could there potentially be some negative consequences to our families and to our, you know, some of our schools if we don't deal with this in a timely way?
Is that question for me, or is that question for Chair Duarte? Trustee O'Herns-Jonata?
I think I'll go to Chair Duarte, as this was his notice of motion.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee O'Herns-Jonata. I did, I put this as an amendment, but because, and I also supply trustees with some information from staff, and staff has the information required, it seems to be an urgent situation, and staff can attest to that. That's the reason, Trustee O'Herns-Jonata, I'm requesting that this be attended urgently. We are in April, and we have registrations available, and there seem to be a sizable number. And, yep, I think it's urgent. Thank you, Trustee O'Herns-Jonata.
Thank you.
Is that good, Trustee O'Herns-Jonata?
Amazing, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. So I'll go ahead and take the vote then, we'll do a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Okay. Trustee O'Herns-Jonata?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Would abstain.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Chair Duarte?
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so unfortunately, that is not unanimous, and as such, we cannot have that added to the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We shall now continue with the approval of the agenda. So there were two, three amendments. Trustee Carabella has asked to remove 6.1.2.4. Trustee Saunders has asked to remove 6.1.2.2. And I'm going to ask to remove 6.2.4, which is a notice of motion amendment to a motion previously adopted. So as you know, trustees, there will be a single...
Point of clarification?
Right.
You're taking away the, your notice of motion?
So the notice of motion will be placed under miscellaneous item.
And then to what advantage?
Trustee Carabella, I don't need to answer that question, just like you have requested to take it out. I've requested to take out the notice of motion, thank you. There will be a single motion to approve the action items, and there will be no discussion. So we have action item 6.1.1, there's a 6.1.2, there's only one item, there's 6.1.2.1. I will now read the motion. Result that the Halton Catholic District School Board approves consent agenda item 6.1.2.1 on April 16th, as submitted. There's only one item, there's 6.1.2.1. May I have a mover for that?
I can move it.
Moved by Trustee Vice Chair Agnew. Looking for a seconder. Seconded by Trustee Powell. I'll take this to a recorded vote. So trustees, we are voting on 6.1. The consent agenda. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Herns-Jonata?
In favor.
Chair Agnew? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Chua, absent. Trustee McGuire, absent. Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion parries. Our next order of business is action items. 6.1.2.2.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, point of order, or point of clarification?
Trustee Carabella, point of order, point of clarification, which one?
Are we, are we not on doing presentations? Did we miss that, presentations, and skip straight to the consent agenda item?
Yes, Trustee Carabella, something wrong with my, at my end. Give me a second, trustees, please stand at ease. There's also the conflict of interest. Trustee Scaldor? Sorry, trustees, some of the documents here have got messed up, but let's get back. So we have completed the approval of the agenda. Declarations of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to item number four, which is presentations. Item 4.1, senior staff update, ESL programming, Director Klein, could you please introduce the presentation?
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Croll will be in a moment leading us in a presentation, or co-leading, I guess, with Rob Petrowski, and this is regarding a special and cherished and valued cohort of students in our school system, that's multilingual learners. And they will give us a sense of the programming that is available to them and the work that we do with our staff, teachers, and others to support those students as they move through our system. So I'll turn it over to these two gentlemen right now.
Perfect timing, thank you. Good evening. I'm here with my colleague, Rob Petrowski, who is our, among many other things, our ESL consultant for the board. Thinking this would be a good opportunity for him to share some of the work that he does to support a variety of students and student needs and educator needs within the system. He's got a short presentation for you tonight, and then an opportunity for trustees to ask questions as well. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you, thanks very much. I'm excited to be here, to give you some information on the programs that we offer. That is ESL, English as a Second Language, English Literacy Development, and English as an Additional Language. So on the first slide here, I'm just going to draw your attention to the heading, Halting, HCDSP welcomes our multilingual learners. And I like to explain this term a little bit. We use the term multilingual learners because it both mirrors the terminology that is common in our most current literature, as well as because we see our newcomer and multilingual students as, through an asset-based lens. So we know that they're here to do more than simply learn English. They're here to contribute to our communities, and we know that they arrive with lots of experiences, lots of wonderful gifts to share with us. And HCDSP is blessed to have a continuous influx of newcomer students and families. They arrive at all times of year, January, September, we got a big influx of international students in August and at the end of semester one. In fact, we had an arrival of at least three new families to HCDSP just within the last couple of days. And one of the first things that newcomers experience when they come to our board is one of our three welcome centers. We've got locations in Oakville, Milton, and Burlington. You'll see a picture there of our Oakville Welcome Center, which is kind of the hub in that area. And within these welcome centers, we've got youth settlement workers who are a fantastic team and provide outreach and settlement services, among other things, to our newcomer parents and students. We've got initial assessments for grades one to 12 for language and math that are done by a dedicated team of experts there as well. Secondary students are assessed prior to timetabling, and what that allows us to do is both understand the academic history and the strength that they're coming from, as well as know what their goals are. So are they planning to go to university, college, go into a trade, or right into the workforce? We're able to, through this initial assessment, help marry that experience with their goals and know kind of how to set them along on the pathway to success. Our elementary students are assessed following pre, or sorry, age-appropriate placement, which means if they are of age for grade seven, then we place them in grade seven and then do a quick assessment afterwards to, again, place them on that journey to success and their goals. We use the step system of tracking English language fluency, which comes to us from the Ministry of Education, where we're directed to assess in oral reading and writing, as well as math and numeracy skills. We'd love if any of you wanted to drop by for a visit, particularly to the Oakville Center. There's always an amazing energy in there. You might see a newcomer family being supported or working with youth settlement workers, or you might see anywhere between one to two to 15 or 20 assessments, as well as the events that the, well, the youth settlement workers put on there. So one thing that you'll definitely see is a banner that I've just included on the right bottom there. And very simply, I think it really encompasses in a nutshell what the Welcome Center services they provide. It just reads, "New to Canada, welcome home." That's my favorite, and I think, you know, the fact that it also is presented in multiple languages says a lot as well. So this is what our welcome centers do. Just a little more information on support for multilingual learners in elementary. Approximately 1,000 multilingual learners receive direct support in grades one to eight. Staff support for kindergarten. Centrally deployed itinerant ESL teachers who support and who, the support reflects individual school needs and varies between schools. We've got a withdrawal program, which encourages co-planning and co-teaching between ESL and classroom teacher and all school staff. So as fantastic as that team of ESL teachers is, we work in conjunction and in partnership with all the other staff in the schools, we're all ESL teachers. We have PD for both ESL and classroom teachers provided. Translinguaging and translinguistic mediation is one of our major focuses, and this is because we recognize that students will continue to learn in multiple languages. So it's not just English only. What we want to do is, what we do is create an environment where students can use their entire language repertoire in order to succeed. So the norm is multi-linguistic spaces. Those are the norm, not the exception. And student step progress is tracked and updated twice yearly, and that allows us to understand where students have been in their fluency, where they are currently, and the steps that they are reaching in their fluency that have to come next, and enables us to support them. Support for multilingual learners in secondary, we've got multi-level ESL and ELD classes and moderating periods that support over 800 secondary ML, so the numbers are big there too. We've got school staff, ESL teachers who work with students and colleagues, so again, that team approach. Transition meetings between grades eight and nine, transitions are a difficult time or can be for many students, and sometimes they're even additionally challenging for our multilingual learners. So at this time of year, we're focused on that. We've got sheltered programming for religion, GLS, history, and civics and careers at some of our locations. If you're not familiar with shelter programs, they are simply classes that are populated with students who are on the very beginning journeys of their fluency or, and have potentially not the background that they would have had they been here for years. So you can understand that a Canadian history course would be a course where a student may not have the background if they're not, or if they're from outside of Canada. So that allows the teacher with these students to scaffold the language, both and the subject and the topics, and the way in which they're covered to ensure that Ministry of Education overall expectations are reached and success, as garnered. We have PD for ESL and mainstream educators as well. And secondary, translinguaging and translinguistic mediation, of course, is another focus, and student step progress is, again, updated twice yearly. Next, as great as all that academic, you know, material is and as essential as it is, there is just so much more than just English for our multilingual learners. And that's because ESL teachers, both in elementary and secondary, make sure there is, and youth settlement workers make sure there is, and our extended ESL team make sure there is. This is just a list, wish I had time to kind of go through all this, but this is just a list of some of the things we do, and you can see a picture there. That's two ESL groups from two different schools coming together to enjoy one of these events. We've got Spanish clubs running, culture clubs, newcomer welcome lunches, morning and afternoon prayers in multiple languages, parent, newcomer parents tea parties, Heritage Month activities, newcomer talent shows. The We All Welcome event is run by the International Student Office. We've got newcomer baking night, that sounds pretty good. Multilingual learner peer-to-peer advice video series. Field trips, there's, it just goes on and on. Because we want to make sure that students not only are welcome and empowered, we also want to make sure that our mainstream students who are not multilingual learners also benefit from the experiences and all the wonderful gifts that our multilingual learners and our newcomer families bring to our communities. And again, here's, you know, the list continues. Multilingual learner peer mentors programs, newcomer ambassador clubs, Celebration of Cultures Committee, newcomer bake exchange, multi-language tutoring programs. It really does continue and go on and on and above and beyond the classroom. Next, I'd love if, you know, we could, we could hear from newcomer families and students, that instead what we do and what I've brought today is we have a Newcomers Guide for Elementary and Secondary, and we survey our students to say, you're a multilingual learner who has been here for a while. If someone new arrives, what advice would you have for them? What would you want them to know that maybe you didn't know? I'm just gonna, I know we're running short on time, so I'm just going to run through one or two of these in the next couple of pages. I think the first one here, the student's advice here on the bottom. First of all, the weather here is cold. When it's winter, I suggest you get gloves, jacket, and hat, and especially snow pants. So this is a student who's worried about the weather, but he, they, he or she continues, "From my personal experience, I just want you to know that in Canada, you are safe. The schools here are amazing. Everyone cares about you, and you're safe." And on the next page here, I believe this is, this is probably from a secondary multilingual learner. Their advice is, "Go to your ESL teacher for anything you need, from finding your first class in grade nine and making friends to helping you apply to college/university. Your ESL teacher will be there for you." And I think that, that's, you know, both those quotes are really telling us, or the rest on these pages, this is what multilingual learners were worried about. You know, is there, what's it going to be like here? And is there somebody here who's going to look out for me? Is there someone here who's going to be on my side? And of course, inevitably, there is, and it comes from our community, as well as our team of ESL teachers. And from that team, one final message, just the last page. For many of us, we have a first, second, or third language learned that's different than English, that is close to our hearts, so I extend to you a thank you in those languages from the ESL teachers and youth settlement workers, and we appreciate your time and attention. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Croll, and Mr. Trustee. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Croll and Mr. Petrowski? Peter Petrowski, sorry. Trustee Saunders?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. What percentage of our, of the students in ESL would be international students that have been brought into the board?
Go ahead, Mr. Petrowski.
I'll turn that one over to, through you, Mr. Chair, I'll turn that over to Rob Dancer.
I believe in secondary, out of the 800 students, there is about 160 or so. Out of the 800 students, there is about 160 or so. So whatever percentage that would be. And then in elementary, out of the thousand students, I believe it's much smaller. It's about 50 or so.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, no? Okay, trustee Dipu.
Thank you and through you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for this presentation. I was, I personally am an immigrant and I understand these students and where they're coming from. I was not part of the ESL program, but personally, but I know some people who have been and who are currently in the program. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of those students for all the work that you're doing right now. It's really amazing to see this presentation and the statistics, so thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up, so Superintendent Crowe and Mr. Piotrowski, thank you and your team for all the work that you do and really sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. We move on to, next item is delegations. We do not have delegations. And we move on to our next order of business, which is consent agenda. So trustees, recall that we took a vote in the, a little earlier today. And I missed some papers out here. So we'll consider that vote as the vote on the agenda, approval of the agenda. And shall take a separate vote on the consent agenda. Okay, trustees? So we have removed items 6.1.2.2, 6.1.2.3, 6.1.2.4 and 6.2.4 from the consent agenda. May I have a mover for this item? Looking for a mover, trustees?
Move it.
Trustees, Murphy? Trustee Saunders, seconds? We shall take a, take a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Oppose.
Trustee Kelly?
Oppose.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Dipu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
I am so sorry, Chair. Can you just clarify? I'm not following the numbers.
So we are voting on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Can we have the consent agenda?
We've removed some, so I just want to make sure I get it right.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, we'll clarify. We'll get the consent agenda on the screen.
Thank you.
No problem. So the approval of the agenda, we, trustees said they want to remove a couple of items. So 6.1.2.1 was asked to be removed by trustee Saunders. 6.1.2.3 was asked to be removed by trustee Carabella. 6.1.2.4 was asked to be removed by trustee Carabella. And 6.2.4 was asked to be removed by myself. So we are voting, we are voting on this item, on the consent agenda now.
You said for trustee Saunders, he asked for 6.1.2.2.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
6.1.2.2, that's correct.
Yeah, you said 6.1.2.1.
That's what I was saying.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. My bad. So trustee Powell, how do you vote?
No, I'm not in favor.
Sorry?
I'm not in favor.
Okay, opposed, opposed. So we have, we have five in favor, three opposed. No abstention, motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. We shall now jump on to action items. Nine, next, which is order of business. 6.1.2.2, policy II-43. Voluntary confidential self-identification of First Nations, Métis and Inuit students. Trustee Ohan Chanara, can you please read this motion? Can we have it up on screen?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-26, managing student risk in inter-school sports, elementary and secondary school be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. This trustee Ohan Chanara moves the motion. This item has come to the board from policy and we need only a mover. So trustees, do we have any questions on this? Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, so I have a question, sir.
So before trustee Saunders, before we go ahead, we will follow the three minute of question time and three minute of debate time, so that we follow standard practice all throughout. So with this, before we move on, I shall start the question time for this particular policy. And if you have questions?
Point of clarification.
Yes, trustee Murphy?
Was this taken out of the consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I didn't, I missed that part.
No, trustee Saunders requested that it item be taken out of consent.
That wasn't the one.
Yeah, so we are at, we are at policy II-43, voluntary confidential self-identification of First Nations, Métis and Inuit students. This, sorry, am I hearing something?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we, I've moved a motion of a, that's not the motion I think trustee Saunders pulled out, the one that we just read, II-26.
Okay.
So we've already put it out there and moved it. So now.
Correct, you're correct, yeah. So I'm, we're gonna follow the three minute question time and three minute debate time, right? So with that, I shall open up the question time. So trustee Saunders, do you have a question or is the?
Sorry, point of privilege, Mr. Chair. We have policy II-43 up on, on the screen. We need the other one. I, thank you, Elizabeth, II-26. Perfect. Now I think we're good.
No, sorry. We need policy II-43 on screen. II-43.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order. We have it backwards, but we've already brought it to the board table and I've already moved and read it. So I'm just wondering what the proper policy will be. Are we gonna continue with this policy or go back to II-43?
Trustee Saunders, let me verify once again. You have requested policy II-43 to be brought out. That's correct. So we have policy II-43, which is to be up on the screen. Correct, that's the one. Trustee Ohan Chanara?
I'm just popping along. All I want to say is that the mistake was made and then we brought up II-26 instead of II-43. Just, there was a mistake made, so we're gonna move on, correct?
Let's do it again. So policy II-43 is the one, it's up on the screen. Can you read the motion?
Absolutely. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-43, voluntary confidential self-identification of First Nation, Métis and Inuit students be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. This item has come to the board from policy and we need only a mover, which is trustee Ohan Chanara. Before we proceed with this, trustee Ohan Chanara, as policy chair, I would like to ask you, this policy was properly, properly discussed and debated at the policy committee meeting?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I think, if what I understand you're asking me, did, did all questions that come to the policy committee, were they answered? Did we, did we not leave any questions unasked? That's correct. And, and to my knowledge, there's no new information that's come up for this policy. So I guess the answer to my question is yes. To your question is yes.
Trustee Ohan Chanara. So with, we have this policy up, which is moved and moved. And we shall follow the three minute question time, three minute debate time, like always.
Please get point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you. So we voted in the policy meeting, it wasn't unanimous, well, nine over nine. So if we had some opposed, some in favor, abstained. Why would it be in the consent agenda if there wasn't consent?
So, okay, so the, I can send you a document on consent agenda and how it works. Consent agenda is the collection of items where the agenda setting, the chair, vice chair and director feel that those items could be clucked together and voted at one point in time. That's done basically to save time at the meeting and making meetings more efficient. Our trustees have every right to pull out an item from the consent agenda. It has nothing to do on how you voted at policy, okay?
Someone voted at policy against?
Doesn't matter.
And then they voted for in the, in the, in the standard meeting, wouldn't they be having an opposite vote?
It doesn't matter. Trustees can vote the way they want at policy and they can vote they want, they want at the board.
So naturally, you would think most would pull these out if it wasn't nine out of nine.
Again, it's up to trustees.
Right.
It's completely up to trustees to pull out an item from the consent agenda. You have the right to do that. Okay, so, so we have the item 11, II-43 on screen, moved and seconded. I shall now open up question time for trustees, if you have questions on this policy. I see trustee Saunders, you have your hand up, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not sure, I, I still have concerns just about the one sentencing that HCDSB recognizes research data statistics have and continue to be used to the detriment of Indigenous peoples, communities and nations. So what I want to make sure is that that's not what's happening in our board and that children feel safe enough to come forward and self-identify. I don't know if anyone can answer that. I know that we had Sherry Sevilles last week, but I just want to make sure that that's not an issue here.
Can you specify where?
Yeah, it's page thirty on the, the board one.
Can you pull that up, please?
It's point four, paragraph two.
Four or five, I believe? Okay, I'm not, Director Klein? Could you answer the question?
Do you wanna go?
Superintendent Crowe?
Sure. Recognize that, that Indigenous Education Advisor Sherry Sable is not here tonight, but I'll, I'll attempt to answer the question. This is language that Sherry has recommended that we include in the policy. I think what it does, trustee Saunders, it actually signals to Indigenous communities that we are sensitive about the use of their data, based on the way it has been used historically, as it says to the detriment of Indigenous people. So what we're doing here, this language, actually to identify problems that, that have occurred when data has been used against Indigenous peoples, as their Indigenous Education Advisor said at the last policy meeting and gave numerous examples and ways in which that data has been used to detriment. We're not saying that it's being done currently in HCDSB, but it's acknowledgement of past and current practices that we are signaling to Indigenous communities that we want to do better and we want to use the sort of terms that you've identified and how your data could be used when we're collecting data about, about First Nations, Métis and Indigenous peoples.
Okay. And just the reason I'm asking is that I believe that I'm, you know, I'm a victim of this because when I self-identified, I was immediately removed from a committee, the bullying committee, without explanation.
Trustee Saunders? Okay, Vice Chair, can you say the point of order?
There's an accusation being made about something that has no merit to it, Mr. Chair, and it doesn't belong at the table.
Absolutely correct.
No, you can't point an order my point of order. Need to let the chair rule.
I, I rule that, that Vice Chair is in order. And trustee Saunders, if you are accusing someone of, 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 of deed, please provide it in writing to the chair. And action shall be taken.
I have written to you multiple times.
Trustee Saunders, are you making an accusation at this board table right now?
Chair, I have written to you multiple times and have received no response. So take that, I, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I rule that you are out of order. Those questions that you have are to be raised and we shall deal with that item. Thank you. Do you have any further questions? Do you have any debate on this item? Thank you. I shall now call the vote on this item, 9.3, 6.1.2.2, which has been moved by trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustee Ohan Chanara, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Murphy?
Abstain.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Chua, absent. Trustee McGuire, absent. Trustee Dipu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Abstain.
We have five in favor, three abstentions, none opposed. Motion carries, the policy is approved. We shall move on to policy II-45, equity inclusive education policy. Trustee Ohan Chanara, can you please read this motion?
Absolutely. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-45, equity and inclusive education be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. This item comes to the board from policy and we need only a mover. Trustee Ohan Chanara, as policy chair, would like to ask you if this policy was properly discussed at the policy committee meeting?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Again, if you're asking me if all questions that were asked were answered correctly. And also, I have no new information from last Tuesday to this Tuesday of anything different for this policy. So yes.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. I shall now open up question time for this particular policy. We shall have three minutes of question time, three minutes of debate and trustee can put an amendment at that point in time. Can we have the policy up on the screen, please? I think, can we have that up, please? Sorry. Trustees, do we have questions on this policy? Trustee Carabella, you have a hand up? Is it a question or is it a debate or is it an amendment?
I have an amendment.
So we'll hold on then. Trustee, any other questions? If not, then we move on to, to debate and trustee Carabella, you're the floor. We move on to debate and go on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward an amendment that I did alert my colleagues under purpose. I wanted to add the phrase "from conception to natural death", so that it reads "The Halton Catholic District School Board, HCDSB recognizes that all people are created equal, comma, from conception to natural death, in the image of God, each with inimitable characteristics deserving of dignity."
Can we expand the screen and trustees, can you see that? Can you go to single page? Yeah. Thank you, trustee. Carabella has provided this amendment. May I have a second up for this, please?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to open up discussion. Time starts now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm including this amendment because we had quite a debate last policy meeting about everyone who, who is protected under the Human Rights Code. And I'm including this amendment because I need, because recognition needs to be given to the unborn child. And as we saw, the Human's Rights Code did not include and does not protect the most vulnerable of human beings, the unborn child in its earliest stage of life in the womb. And as a Catholic Board, this is one of the tenets of our faith, that life at all stages is sacred and therefore it should be mentioned in this policy about equity and inclusion. It's important to reflect our Catholic values and stance wherever we can. Equity and inclusion should apply to all human beings, as all human beings in all stages of life are deserving of dignity and to be treated equally, respected equally, their existence acknowledged equally. There are approximately 1,500 abortions in Halton each year. That means five children died today. May their souls rest in peace. These children are our potential future students and we should and need to include them in this policy. So that is why I'm putting forward this amendment. It's a first step and it's appropriate, I believe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustees, do we have any questions on this amendment? Seeing none? Trustee Carabella, you get to close. One second.
I don't have, you don't have to put your timer on. It won't be three minutes. I just hope this, the board can support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. That I shall call the vote. Trustee, oh, sorry. Trustee. Trustee, uh, Ohan Chanara, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Thank you. That's okay. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, just a question, um, from the policy. It's under purpose, but really application and scope usually speaks to, uh, outlines who the policy applies to, like students, et cetera. So we look at the application and scope of the policy. That usually outlines who the policy is applying to. So in this policy, if we go to application and scope, in this portion where it talks about who this actual policy is applying to.
Thank you.
I just offer that up for information. That's all.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh, I see, uh, Superintendent Bakai, you have your hand up? Sorry? Oh, I see it up here. Trustee, uh, Carabella, you, uh, have had a chance to close and you've closed and so let's call the vote on this item. Uh, Vice Chair? Trustee, uh, I call the vote.
Is, is, would the close be the last spoken word about the amendment? Like, would trustee Carabella finish, given she's closing or?
That's right.
So should she not finish?
She's finished. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote?
Oppose.
Trustee Kelly?
Oppose.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Oppose.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Oppose.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor, five opposed. Uh, motion, uh, the amendment fails. We shall now vote on the policy as presented. Do you have, trustees, do we have questions on the policy?
A question.
I don't see a hand up, trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Let's go to section under our commitment preamble, number four.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, uh, trustee Kennedy. Uh, trustee Carabella?
I'm going to go with adding, uh, making a motion to move this policy to be brought back to the staff policy working group and be reviewed to make sure it's consistent with and reflects the contents of the recent document titled Declaration on Human Dignity.
So trustee Carabella, you, you can make a motion to refer it back to policy and then from policy it goes to.
Okay.
This document came from policy to us, so it goes back to policy. So you're going to make a motion to refer back to policy?
To policy.
Thank you. So trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second up, please?
I'll second it.
Second it, trustee Murphy? Uh, give me a second to check the rules, please. Thank you, trustee Carabella. You get to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say that I'm going through the policy and on the third section of school community relationships, I think there it says that we should sustain a positive school climate reflective of Catholic values that support student achievement. And, um, I wanted to, uh, make sure that, uh, girls who might become pregnant during high school, that there is some thought and some positive messaging for them to decide to keep their child, um, to understand the value of their child, um, to be given positive, um, suggestions of adoption, um, that they would not feel discriminated against. And I think it's, and the following paragraph in that section speaks to, uh, here it is. What's it? Examine. To remove any barriers that exist preventing full participatory school community relations, including obstacles associated with any systemic discrimination. Well, I'm speaking to perhaps the, the, it can be looked at to make sure that, uh, girls in that situation would, um, be given a positive alternative and not, uh, perhaps get a lot of messaging that could be to abort their child and, and that's a way of solving the issue, which it isn't. And especially because of our faith, uh, we have to have a clear message for those girls. Thank you. So I think that there's room for studying this new declaration on human dignity within this, uh, policy. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question about, um, when we have students in our school who may be faced with a teenage pregnancy, i- is it our mandate to provide them with guidance and counseling on what they should be doing with respect to their life choices, providing them with opportunities for decision-making on such situations?
Thank you. I'll pass this on to Director Klein. Director Klein?
Could you repeat that again? What's the?
I would just like to understand because I just, I want some clarification on, I think, what is the intention behind this? Uh, in our schools, are we providing counsel and direction to students who may find themselves in a situation of teenage pregnancy to advise them on what their options are with respect to that pregnancy? I, I don't think we are, but I'm just curious if that's something that I'm.
Yeah, that's not, uh, I'm looking to staff here to see if that, my expectation will be otherwise and, uh, or to be that and, uh, uh, that would be our, our protocol and procedure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hand up. So trustee Carabella, you got to close. Can we have the motion back up there? Uh, trustee Carabella, you get to close that, close this, uh, discussion on, on the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just that there's an incorrect part now on this motion that it's be brought back just to the policy meeting, not the pa- staff policy group.
Is, uh, is that the motion that you submitted?
Yes, but then we amended it right here to just say that it just goes back to policy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So trustees, this is the policy up on our screen. It has been moved by trustee Carabella uh, and seconded by trustee Murphy. I shall now call the, oh, trustee Ohan Chanara, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Soria. It's not your fault. I'm doing it last minute, so I, I do apologize. Through you, Mr. Chair, can, may I please ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Awesome. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the director and probably to the superintendent of policy. Superintendent Bakai, just a question about the messaging that trustee Carabella is, is bringing forward, you know, albeit I respect the messaging. Would this go maybe into religious education rather into this specific policy? Is there another area where maybe that messaging uh, goes currently as opposed to a current, current policy that we're discussing now?
Uh, Director Klein?
I think it was directed to Superintendent Bakai in terms of her mastery of, uh, policy and the, the alignment of all that.
Uh, Superintendent Bakai, go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Chair, and, um, in response to, uh, trustee Ohan Chanara's, uh, question. I would agree with you, although I would not speak on behalf of, um, Superintendent Nar. But, um, what you, what you have stated, um, trustee Ohan Chanara is more in line with, um, the instructional component through religious education. This, this policy is all encompassing, as it was noted at the policy committee, and I know that it was discussed quite at length at that time, um, who it reaches and the all. That specific messaging would be handled in a different area.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Ohan Chanara, any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Uh, with the trustee, Carabella, I guess you closed discussion. So we shall call the vote on the, uh, the amendment as you see on our screen. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Oppose.
Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew?
Oppose.
Trustee Kelly?
Oppose.
Trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor, five opposed. The motion fails. We come back to the main policy. It's policy I I forty-five and we are going to vote on the policy as presented. I shall call the vote on policy I I forty-five. Trustee Saunders, how do you vote?
Favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Great, Mr. Chair is distracted, so we're voting on the final.
Policy I I forty-five.
Right, okay, so I'm, I'm opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Murphy?
Opposed.
We have six in favor, two opposed, no abstention. Should carries. The policy is approved. Shall now move on to the next policy, the item nine point five, uh, just six point one point two point four in the consent agenda, policy I I dash eleven, hiring and promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel. Trustee Ohan Chanara, could you, uh, please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, we be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy triple I eleven, hiring and promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel be approved as amended.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. This, uh, motion was, uh, brought to the board from policy and we need only a mover. Again, trustee Ohan Chanara, question to you. Was this policy, uh, properly discussed and debated at the policy committee meeting?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, properly discussed, questions were asked and questions were answered and I have no new information that would change anything to this policy, to my knowledge that I have.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. So we have this policy up, which has been, uh, moved. Uh, I shall now open up question time for trustees. Trustees, do we have questions on this policy? I see trustee Carabella, you have a hand up? You have questions or do you want to go into debate time and amendment? Okay. So we shall move on to debate time and amendment shall be accepted. Trustee Carabella? You have submitted your amendment, I believe?
Yes, I submitted.
Can we have the amendment, uh, up on screen, please? Trustee Carabella, you submitted this amendment. Uh, may I have, uh, you move the amendment?
Yes, I moved the amendment.
I look for a second before we.
Do you want me to verbalize it? I need to move it.
You, you, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that under requirements, we will add the chair and two randomly selected trustees who express interest. So that it reads as the following bullet, the board of trustees through a hiring committee composed of the chair and two randomly selected trustees who express interest, the secretary director, superintendent of human resources services and a senior staff member will perform the function of selecting the candidate for supervisory officer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, chair of policy, uh, trustee Ohan Chanara, was this item discussed at policy?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, we did have a discussion about this. Uh, yes, we did.
So, uh, may I ask for a second up for this?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella, you get to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we did speak about this and that at the time I didn't, uh, provide this particular wording, so it was, uh, some more thought was put into it and was, um, yeah, looking at the procedure as well. So I brought this amendment forward because it pertains to trustees and we should decide how we want to participate in this hiring committee. The bullet just above this, um, says that the director of education is the employee of the elected board of trustees and reports directly to the board. So that's just above it. Um, and therefore it makes sense for the trustees to make decisions on the, how they want to be involved and participate in the hiring of the supervisory officers, which affects the governance of our school board. I would like to point out that in the past, and I was trying to think, it must have been twenty twenty, all tr- I was, uh, involved in one such, uh, committee and all trustees' names were put in a hat and three were randomly selected. Um, another time recently, following this particular procedure V one twenty-eight, uh, the director chose at his discretion the chair and two trustees. I, I believe this procedure, as it currently stands, is problematic as it excludes other interested trustees and is therefore a systemic barrier to equity and inclusion among the trustees as some will be excluded and not, not invited or, um, uh, or not have the opportunity to participate. So I'm proposing, um, including the chair as one as always being there, but that the two others are trustees who expressed interest because not everybody might want to be on the hiring committee, but those that do want to express interest, express interest to be involved, uh, that their names are submitted and can be chosen randomly from the eight trustees, if they're all interested or less. But it gives an opportunity to each trustee who expresses interest to have an equal chance to be involved in this important task of the hiring committee of the supervisory officer. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Carabella. Uh, trustees, do we have questions? Seeing none, trustee? Trustee Kennedy, I don't see your hand up. Can you use the feature as I requested in the beginning?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
It's one through you, Mr. Chair. What does our director think of this update?
Uh, trustee Kennedy, uh, this, we have, let's focus on, oh, you want to ask the director comments on this update? Okay, Director Klein?
Yeah, I think, um, the role of the director is to, is to, uh, is to make these choices, so I don't, I, 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 I'm not sure where this, uh, relates. I think the governance system would show us that the director, the director's purview is to, is to make these decisions.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. With that, I shall now, uh, hand it over to trustee Carabella to, to close. Trustee Carabella?
Well, I close. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I respectfully disagree.
Oh, sorry, uh, trustee Carabella. I see trustee Ohan Chanara does hand up. I'll come back to you. Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Thank you again. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just, I just wanted to offer something up for the consumption of my colleagues. That just remember that, you know, the superintendents are direct, are the, are director of education. So they're his direct, his or her direct reports at the time, so I really feel that the director can follow whatever process he or she would like to, to get our trustees on the hiring committee. And the director of education is, is our employee, so obviously we would be on that committee to hire the director of education. I just want to offer that, remember, fellow trustees, that the superintendent is a direct report of our director of education. So allowing that individual to have some leeway and, and full disclosure, I was on the committee last time and, and, you know, it took two days and, uh, I still think it should be left up to the director, even if I wasn't included or not, so I'm just offering it up.
Thank you. With that, uh, trustee Carabella, you get.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I respectfully disagree. That's why it's before us as an amendment, a motion that trustees can make. And again, we govern ourselves. We should be able to allow each other to have the opportunity. and in a fair, equitable way that includes everybody, that's not a barrier to a trustee who would like to be involved and is not, will not be chosen by the director. So it is a fair way. I think it's, I think it's fair. I just don't understand the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. With that, I shall call the vote. Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor, five opposed.
I don't vote, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Vice Chair Agnew?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Oh, why did I do that? Sorry, my apologies.
All right.
I thought I had it right here. Okay. We have four in favor, five opposed. The motion fails. The amendment fails, sorry. Shall now go back to the policy as presented. So this policy was moved by trustee Ohan Chanada. I shall call the vote on the policy, item nine point five. Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella? Correct, correct.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy, okay. We have five in favor, three opposed. Motion carries. The policy is approved. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is staff reports. Item ten point one, recommended names for Milton number nine. Superintendent Bakaj, could you please present your report?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to provide trustees with an update on the process of naming the new Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School as per our policy I fifteen name school, school name selection. In consultation with our Milton number nine school name selection committee, which consisted of Principal Vince Chinanea and our parents Nadia Azaveto and Janelle Okereke Ahimi, Nick Scott and myself, trustee Duarte, Father Lawrence, parent of Saint Benedict Parish, and Andrea Swenden, our manager of strategic communications, three names were submitted for consideration by members of the broader community. By way of background, on Friday, March eighth, an invitation to submit potential school names was sent to families who currently live in the boundaries of Milton number nine school community, as well as parishioners at Saint Benedict Catholic Church, and the results are in the appendix A for the feedback that we received. Following that, on March twentieth, the Milton number nine school name selection committee reconvened to review the names submitted by the members of the committee. And the committee developed a short list of names in accordance with the diocesan criteria as outlined in our policy, and they considered all the names and rationale provided by community members and created this list of three names. Saint Josephine Baquita, Saint Oscar Romero, and Our Lady of Grace. We then had a feedback online anonymous form that was sent out for stakeholder consultation for the period of March twenty-second to April second inclusive, and the link to the online forums were sent via email on March twenty-second to all parents and guardians residing within the attendance boundaries for Milton number nine, as well as parents and guardians who registered their children to attend the school, inviting them to select their top two preferences from the shortlist of potential school names. The online poll was also featured on our board's website and shared through social media and promoted through Saint Benedict Parish. The rationale for each of the names and a brief biography of each saint were provided, and they're included in appendix B, and you'll find the feedback that was received in appendix C. And you'll note in appendix C in the chart that there were a total of four hundred and thirteen votes among the three suggested school names. The number one choice was Saint Josephine Baquita, which had the highest number of votes. Our Lady of Grace received a hundred and sixty-five votes, and Saint Oscar Romero received fifty votes. And the preference of the community as outlined above is in favor of naming the new Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School, Saint Josephine Baquita. In conclusion, we will invite trustees to consider two recommended names for the new Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School to be forwarded to the Diocese of Hamilton for consideration by His Excellency Bishop Douglas Crosby. An action report recommending a preferred name and an alternate name will be submitted to Bishop Douglas Crosby for his consideration, and response will be brought forward at the May seventh, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. It is exciting, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Bakaj.
Questions. And thank you to everyone who served on the committee.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Bakaj? Seeing none, thank you, Superintendent Bakaj for presenting your report. And I want to recognize and profusely, profusely thank our three Milton parents. Shout out to Janelle, Nadia, Nick, and Father Larry and our staff, who have been part of this process, which was very enjoyable. Thank you all for your time and contributions. We shall now move on to a recommended name for Milton number nine CES. Superintendent Skripak, could you please present your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just for clarifications, Milton number ten this time. Yes, okay. Wanted to extend my gratitude to the members of the committee for the selection of two names. First off, Father Larry and Marlon Roden, who was a parent who stepped up from the community, who's currently a parent at Saint Scholastica. Thank you, Marlon. Principal Angie Barton, Andrea Swenden, who helped us stay on track and keep me in order there. Trustee Murphy and Ariana Chura are members as well. Three names were chosen. We had a stakeholder committee meeting on March the sixth, at which point we were able to create a list of names, and a shortlist was created based on our selection on March the twentieth. Three names were put forward for a vote by parents, Saint Josephine Baquita, Divine Mercy, and Saint Veronica. Grateful that we didn't have to go through a wrestling match with number nine as to one of our names. The stakeholders within the community, we had a tremendous turnout in our vote, and they were presented with the names, at which point we had determined that Saint Veronica had the highest number of first-choice votes with a hundred and eighty. Divine Mercy received a hundred and thirty-nine first-choice votes, and Saint Josephine Baquita received seventy-four first-choice votes. So the preference of the community as outlined above in our notes is Saint Veronica. So two names will now be forwarded to His Excellency Bishop Crosby as per the policy. So in accordance with policy I fifteen, trustees are invited to consider the two recommended names, and I will read the resolution as worded here. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the following two school names, ordered in priority as possible names for Milton number ten Catholic Elementary School. First choice being Saint Veronica Catholic Elementary School, our second choice is Divine Mercy Catholic Elementary School. Be it further resolved that the board-approved list of possible school names be submitted to Bishop Douglas Crosby for his consideration and response. Honored to be able to put forward this motion.
Thank you, Superintendent Skripak. I see no trustees hand up there. I want to recognize and thank our Milton parents, Marlon, Father Larry, and our staff, who have been part of this process. Thank you all for your time and your contributions. Shall now move on to now ten point three, recommended names for Oakville number four CES. Superintendent Denalfo, please present your report.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So in consultation with the North Oakville number four Catholic Elementary School name selection, which consisted of trustee Saunders, student trustee Maguire, Father Jerry Punizari from Mary Mother of God Parish, parent Angelo Chmino, and Carrie Lu Q from the North Oakville community, myself, and Principal Snyder, with the support of Andrea Swenden, who kept us on track as well. As with the other committees who were naming their schools, on Friday, March eighth, an invitation to submit potential names was sent to families who currently live in the boundary of North Oakville number four Elementary School, as well as to parishioners of Mary Mother of God. A shortlist was provided to the committee, and the following four names by the committee created the shortlist. The four names that were shortlisted were Saint Cecilia, Saint John de Brubuff, Mary Mother of God, and Saint Philomena. Our results are available through appendix B and C. We did have a huge response from the community, be it Halton Catholic, the community that lives in that North Oakville four boundary, and through Mary Mother of God. We had five hundred and fourteen votes that came through. The number one choice by the community was Saint Cecilia, with Mary Mother of God receiving the second highest number of votes. The preference of the community as outlined above is in favor of naming Oakville number four Catholic Elementary School, Saint Cecilia, with the second choice being Mary Mother of God. Policy I fifteen stipulates that the list of two names, a preferred and an alternative, be submitted to Bishop of the Diocese for review and consideration.
Thank you, Superintendent Denalfo. I see no hand up, so I want to recognize and thank our Oakville parents, Carrie Lu, Angelo, Father Jerry, and our staff, who have been part of this process. Thank you for your time and your contributions. We move on to our next order of business, which is information items, eleven point one, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Good, Chair. Thanks. The report's fairly straightforward. We're looking at online learning at the ACDSB and start with PPM one six seven. That governs this work that we do. It requires grade nines, from grade nine onward, that all students earn a minimum of two online learning credits as part of their Ontario secondary school diploma, although there is an option for opting out. By the way, that PPM came out in two thousand twenty-one. The asynchronous format is the mode for these courses. That means they're delivered entirely using the internet. They don't require students to be physically with educator in the school. They provide a wider array of courses. That means that students can take courses not offered in their school or even their board. So students here in Halton could take courses that are offered by someone from Sudbury Catholic, which is a fairly popular one, and vice versa. So, and there's a breakdown of that. So we have to kind of reserve spots for students from other boards and vice versa. So therefore, there's more of a wider array of courses that can be taken. Imagine from a small board and small schools how that could help them out a lot. The schedule, it provides a more flexible schedule for students. For instance, you could have course conflicts in regular schools, and because of this, that could avoid a course conflict. Where you say, I want to take this course, but it's in the same period as another course I want to take, this could alleviate that. So it allows that flexibility. There's something called a learning management system that manages all of our online learning, not just here in Halton, but across the province. Generally, these are either Bright Space or D two L. Online learning is growing. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, at least up to the first semester, end of the first semester, the number of students taking courses that were online had doubled. And achievement so far is noteworthy, particularly with our Halton students. I think in the report itself, it had differentiation, but ninety-six percent pass rate in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the full year of last year. And then we had some comments in the full report. I had some comments that were written down that came to us. But one I want to add here is the following. I enjoyed how it was easy to get all of my assignments done and to move ahead quicker. I also enjoyed how I wasn't stuck in a class full of kids. From the mouths of babes. We have learning partners, of course, two in the province of Ontario. There are two online learning supports in the province utilized by this board. One actually came first, and the second one was a remarkable catch-up, and proud we are as Catholic schools. One is the Ontario E-Learning Consortium, and then very quickly, since there was not a heavy Catholic curricular support at the start, we had Catholic Virtual Ontario, or CBO, ride to the rescue. The first one, the online, Ontario E-Learning Consortium, is comprised of fifty-five Ontario school boards. We have nearly eighty school boards, just over seventy school boards, working together to support online learning. Cross-board registration is managed by a platform called Prism. And then certainly over the last few years, really due to the efforts of Catholic leadership in the province and Catholic teachers who've helped write curriculum, twenty-nine Catholic school boards, so must include some French boards, to provide access to our secondary online courses taught and developed by Catholic teachers. The CBO released sixty-six courses and continues to provide updated content for secondary courses. And the CBO is constantly looking for teachers to take advantage of opportunities to do some writing for different subjects. And again, that's moved forward at leaps and bounds for Catholic curriculum. Next item of this report. Is summer school for this coming year. It's run by Thomas Merton Adult or Center for Adult and Continuing Education. It's a full list of current two thousand twenty-four summer school courses on the school's website. It can be reviewed. There are full-credit summer school courses that will be running from July the second to the twenty-ninth, so basically the full month of July. And there are two credit co-ops that will begin in May, so that will also support students just for a longer period because co-op, of course, involves work in the community. Courses are also asynchronous, and the registration closes June twenty-first. And of course, we encourage anyone interested to avail themselves of that. Co-op and dual-credit courses will have different deadlines. As with all our secondary schools and students who are in them, they will have the support of guidance teachers to help them with those because sometimes navigating those decisions and the array of courses is a little daunting or confusing. Last item was, is, item of, I guess, good news. We want growth in our, in our board, and we have growth at Bishop Reading, and as the chair noted earlier, Milton itself is growing. So not a big surprise that we'd have massive growth at Bishop Reading. But even growth has its challenges. Enrollment could reach in the upcoming year three thousand students at that school. That's, that is eye-popping right there. Physical space has reached Physical space has reached significant limits. The capacity of Bishop Reading is unable to support regional programs like AP, which brings students in from across Milton. The numbers that we saw most recently were that there are 367 students, and remember, we have people registering all the time. 367 students of the 659 who have applied for the pre-AP at Bishop Reading for this coming year, 24, 25, come from Saint Francis Xavier or Kateri boundaries. So you can imagine with the 3,000, and you look at the numbers that are coming in from outside of the boundaries, that is something that could be a math problem that we could perhaps shift some numbers around. In reviewing the current capacity of Bishop Reading, staff from our facilities, planning services, school services, and curriculum departments have looked at three possible solutions. I didn't pop these in in any dramatic way. Possible solution would be to limit applications to pre-AP at Bishop Reading. So you want to go into AP? Here's a number you don't miss, you don't get the cut, then you're not. The results would be a decrease in enrollment at BR. That would result in many families though not being able to access the program. We think in threes, don't we? The second one, moving pre-AP to Saint Francis, decreasing enrollment at BR. However, Saint Francis, while declining, already has many portables, and new programs are also beginning. You're probably aware that in the next year, we're looking at STEAM, and then the regional sports program continues to, they continue to move forward and grow. Final is opening an additional pre-AP site in Milton to Saint Kateri. That decreases the enrollment at BR, like the other options. Saint Kateri has available space and the opportunity to combine with the pre-IB courses and increase enrollment at Saint Kateri. So after considering all those possibilities, staff recommendations to move the students outside the Bishop Reading catchment, that's the Saint Francis Xavier and Saint Kateri area, to Saint Kateri is recommended, that's the most viable option. This solution, while not perfect, helps stabilise both the populations at Reading and Kateri, and ensures continued access to AP programming for all parents and students who want to participate in AP. I think it was mentioned earlier too, in terms of communication timelines, needless to say, sooner the better in terms of decision. So here we are, the middle of April. There are families looking at where their child is going to be in September, and I guess the sooner the better. Better than in June, better than in May. So we would recommend that we make that decision as soon as possible. I don't have any more to add to it, look staff, but possibly there'll be some questions for clarity and be happy to entertain those. Thanks.
Thank you Director Klein for presenting your report. Trustees, do we have questions? Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. For option two, moving to Saint Francis Xavier, what would happen to the current students that are at Bishop Reading? What does that look like in terms of the transition?
Okay, I didn't hear all that. I heard for option two.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, option two was move AP to Saint Francis Xavier. And my question is, how does that look in terms of transition? What happens to the AP students at BR?
Okay, I'm going to toss this over to our AP Superintendent Croll.
Superintendent Croll.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. The intention of this would be to move only students starting at Bishop Reading for next year, and only those outside of the Bishop Reading catchment. So the students that normally would go to Saint Francis or Saint Kateri, but are applying to the BR AP program. So the students that are currently at BR wouldn't be displaced. It's a way of just trying to decrease the number of students that would be enrolling at Bishop Reading next year, so we don't get close to that 3,000 mark.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Correct.
Director Klein.
No, no more to add. That also includes, of course, not just the students that are in the Catholic school systems in Kateri and St FX, but the ones who come from the, from our co-termin support as well.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. So the, isn't the IB program at Saint Kateri? So I thought you cannot have AP and IB at the same facility?
Director Klein.
I think we did too, up until a couple of weeks ago. So I'll turn that over to Superintendent Croll in terms of the, what we learned.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. We did reach out to the IB organization, and the, the staff at Saint Kateri are working with a representative from the IB organization. So we did have this conversation with them ahead of time to ensure that it wouldn't jeopardize the IB application that Saint Kateri is currently undergoing. We did learn that while though not common, it's not forbidden to have both AP and IB in the same school. It's a model that some private schools use. It's a model that certainly some North American schools use. I wouldn't say it's overly common in Ontario, but there's nothing that precludes us from doing it, especially in, I would say, under precarious situation like we're in with Bishop Reading right now.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
What is the current enrollment now at Bishop Reading?
Current enrollment, right, as it stands, or yeah, I'll look at Superintendent Denalfo might know that.
It's just over 2,600, but the projected with all of the AP students in grade nine that have applied is 2,891, so approaching 3,000. We definitely saw a lot of enrollment last summer at Bishop Reading. So the concern as these numbers are, have been coming in steadily, and they're not just coming from our own Catholic schools. We have more than half are coming from the public system and the private system of those numbers. So we are definitely attracting people from outside Halton Catholic.
Trustee Murphy, you have a hand up again?
Yeah.
My goodness, I'm sorry, my microphone is off. Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. So for the Saint Francis relocation, does that mean eventually you would phase AP out of BR? Or ultimately, would there be AP at BR and Francis Xavier? Thank you.
Superintendent Croll.
Sorry. Yeah, through you. The intention, the staff recommendation would be to have AP at two sites. So Saint Kateri, as well as at Bishop Reading. And that's, and that Saint Kateri would be the site for students outside of the BR catchment area.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
So students within the BR catchment would still be able to do AP? Up here.
Yes, I see, I see. Okay, thank you, I see no other hand up. So Director Klein, thank you for presenting our report. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, just to ask. Oh, thank you, sorry. So in Oakville, there's only one school with AP. And in Burlington, are there other, there is one school with AP or two?
Superintendent Croll.
Sure, are you testing me, Trustee Carabella?
I am.
I'm just kidding. In, in Oakville, we have Saint Thomas Aquinas has the IB program. Holy Trinity has the AP program. In Burlington, we made the decision last year, if you recall, to add AP to Corpus Christi, as well as at the existing program, that assumption. Okay, and there isn't an IB school currently in Burlington.
And just to follow up with that, how do the students choose which AP?
In Burlington?
Yes.
This year, we've allowed them to have choice, so students could apply to both programs. That's, I'll just leave it there for now. So at, at this time, we haven't directed students by boundary to one school or another. Because it, because of, we haven't had capacity issues at either school to this point.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, one follow-up question. When did the AP start in Georgetown? Or it's there, or it's starting?
Two years back, three years.
I think you stumped me, Trustee Carabella. I, I think it was two years ago, but don't quote me on that, but I can follow up with you on that. It is up and running, correct.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, I just have a question. So was it 200 extra students for September we expect, and we have currently? Was it 200?
Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Chair, I didn't hear your question, Trustee.
So was it 200 extra this September versus current? We're expecting at BR?
This, this. No, it's more than that. The enrollment is 659. 659.
The entire school was 2,600 to 2,800? Was that, was that whatever?
For next year.
For next year, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. For 2,900.
We have too many speakers here, let's do one thing. Trustee Kennedy, you have a question?
No, I just have a question. Do we have any concerns about students who may have applied for Bishop Reading to go to AP? And may just not come at all? And they may go to a public school with AP because they really wanted to go to BR because of its proven success and track record in sports teams and
Director Klein.
Well, that's why these, these decisions are never easy. Sorry, through you, Chair. And yeah, those are concerns. We have concerns about all our students and families. We also had concerns about the fact that we're reaching the limit in terms of physical capacity of the school. And this, in terms of the, the options, is the most prudent.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Can we just look at the options? There was three options there.
Can we have the previous slide? Thank you.
I have a question. So the, the options seem all to centre around AP. They're all AP-driven. What about an option of keeping AP at that school entirely, and having different boundaries, and providing busing for FX or Kateri?
Pass it to Director Klein.
Start in terms of the busing, which is quite the additional cost to it, but I'm not sure, I saw Superintendent Croll's hand up on that one. And trust me, that, we did, those were things that we began to think of as we went through, and then we settled on AP. Superintendent Croll?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak to boundary reviews, but I would say that because this is an optional program, this is not, this, there are students who go to Bishop Reading because they're in the Bishop Reading catchment area. Those students should have the right to go to Bishop Reading. For students that are applying to an optional program, as I said, the first choice is the one that nobody will like, is to say we're capping the program and, and to be able to just have a school size that works. Offering the program at an additional site, we believe is the best option and should be the most attractive to be able to say to, to parents, we're still able to offer you the optional program that you want. It's just not at the physical site that you thought it was going to be.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, so just what about sports teams? Do we have sports teams at Saint Kateri? Just wondering, students who want to do AP but also want to be on a sports team? If they don't have any, they don't have that choice anymore, could we lose those students? That's my concern.
I'll talk to Superintendent Skripic, but as of last year when I was there, they were, that, that school was punching above its weight in terms of work that they do extracurricularly for students. It was amazing what the staff has done.
It's, I would argue, an overachieving staff that offers a full complement of sports, swimming, football, basketball, you name it. And now that they're going to be in a, in their own physical location, I have every confidence that they'll be able to not only offer those, but even more programming as the staff complement grows. And with the additional students, it's, it would actually help out.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
Just wondering about normal timelines. So when we introduce AP to a school, I think there's probably a process that's a little more than a few months, maybe a year? How do we do, how is that process normally? Like, I saw a community consultation on the old approved motion. So it sounds like there wouldn't be any community consultation here if we're, if we're moving quickly.
Director Klein?
Yeah, I'll talk in terms of the, the, the process and the timeline sequence. Superintendent Croll, can you help with that?
Sure. When we, so if you're referring to the, you're referring to the program last year that we put in at Corpus Christi?
Referring to the motion earlier that said.
Okay. That motion originated from me. I, I was the mover of that motion, so I can give a little bit of history. The intent of the, of the motion, community consultation, was if there was a change in the program itself, but we're not changing the program, we're expanding the program. So, so the program, you're not taking out something, you're not changing the curriculum or changing anything in the program. The idea is to expand the program, program stays the same. The courses, AP courses stay the same. Superintendent Croll, go ahead.
Yeah, again, we would be offering the same pre-AP courses to students that at Bishop, both Bishop Reading and Saint Kateri. I should note as well that pre-AP is a Halton Catholic District School Board program. It's not the Advanced Placement Program that students take. Those courses are in grade, they're linked to the exams students take in grade 11 and 12. So the programming that we would, we would be implementing at Saint Kateri is our own program. That, that would be our own staff and our own administrators. And in speaking with the administrators at Saint Kateri, they feel confident that they would be able to, to, to implement a pre-AP program in time for next year.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy has a hand up. I'll go back to Trustee Murphy.
Mr. Chair, and through you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because under possible solutions, it says moving to pre-AP to Saint Francis Xavier versus opening an additional pre-AP site. I'm wondering why the difference in the wording, if they're essentially the same thing? Is there some nuance there that I'm missing?
Superintendent Croll?
No, I don't think so. I think it's really like, you know, capping at BR or moving to one of those two sites.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Okay, so, okay, great, thank you.
Trustee Kennedy, back to you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about consulting maybe the 369 students about, you know, what would your choice be? This is, this is what we're going to be doing, or thinking about doing? What, what would be your, would you, would you go to the, the new school, the new place? Or what are your, what are your thoughts on that? And would you stay with ACDSB or come to ACDSB?
I'll just start off and pass it to Superintendent Loft. We, we talk about increasing our numbers all the time. We always talk at our board about our numbers being low. This is an opportunity for us to increase our numbers. Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kennedy. As we've discussed earlier, there, space is a premium. We don't have the space. Like, it's, I guess.
Yeah, Ryan. Superintendent Mark?
Yeah, thank you, through, through you, Mr. Chair. You're right, we've already done a pretty extensive addition on that school back in, it's early COVID. And to go beyond that, we already have roughly 50 portables on site there now. To go beyond that, we would need to do other infrastructure upgrades, adding more fire hydrants, which are about ballpark 500 to 700,000 a pop. New electrical substation upgrade. And even beyond that, we need more washroom fixtures in there to meet the building code. So we can get like several millions of dollars, be able to accommodate more of those students in the building. And then, Trustee Kennedy, you also mentioned earlier on about, you know, potentially looking at busing to, and not affecting AP students. The only way to do that would be to move out regular track students at, at BR and have them go to Kateri or FX as well. So, yeah, that, that would therefore displace other folks that are already attending BR. And doing that with current students would require a boundary review by our policy as well.
Thank you, I see.
Yeah, just, just lastly, wondering about training. So, you know, September's coming around quick. It sounds like this would be September. So how do we ensure that we have proper training for teachers who don't teach AP courses right now? And are we concerned that there's a bit of competition between that and IB? Between those two programs? How do we ensure that they're getting adequate training and students are getting what they need?
Absolutely correct, Trustee Kennedy. It's critical, super critical. That's the reason I put this, my notice of motion, understanding this, that timelines are short. I'll pass this on to Director Klein.
Yeah, I'm going to turn those questions over to Superintendent Croll, because it does talk about the relationship between that and IB, and also what the plan would be to ensure that the right people are in front of the students and that they're, and they're ready to do the work they need to do. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're ready to move on to our training plan as soon as we get this, this, as soon as the decision is made. So we've already got a team in place that's going to be implementing that. We wonder whether some staff from BR will want to move over to Kateri with the, with the, we're not counting on that, but that is something that I've considered, that we likely attract from our other schools, some teachers that are already AP-trained. But it would be our intention to begin the training as soon as possible, and then to continue the training through next year.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
I forgot now, sorry.
Trustee Murphy.
Mr. Chair, and through you. My question is actually not related to this, it's related to online learning. Can I flip back to that?
Sure. Regarding AP program?
No, the, the previous part of the Director's Report was on online learning.
Can we just hold that thought? Trustee Kennedy, you have a question on the AP program?
Yeah, just wondering if you could do.
We'll come back to you.
If after, if there are changes, if you could track that 369 group of students and just see what they do? That would be good data for the future, to know if they all did move over to the school you've told them to go to, versus the one that they, they chose originally.
So what I'm hearing is you want the students to join the school and track them, or?
No, I would say if they're going to, it sounds like there might be students getting a notice that here's the, here's where your AP program will be, right? So I'd like to know, of those 369, are 100 just not going to come at all? Or are they going, are they all going to come? Because they're all fine that there's a change. That would be interesting to know. Did we lose any students, potential students, such as, which is revenue?
So?
Because of the change?
So we are going to conduct this experiment based and not worry about the, the numbers that we are talking about. So Superintendent Denalfo, go ahead.
Through you, Chair, and to Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, one of the reasons where there's an influx this year is because Halton District is no longer offering AP. So there's no opportunity for grade nine students who wanted to do AP at Halton District to do it. Hence, they're coming to Halton Catholic. Okay, so that's why we've seen this influx, different than other years. So we have an opportunity, because of the size of Kateri, to offer a second program in Milton.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, can I come back to you?
Yes, I did remember my question. It's very simple, but thank you for all this information. So this, this wasn't on, this was updated when out on our board package, these slides. Is it today? Because I didn't see them over the weekend.
I'm not sure. Elizabeth, then was this Director Klein? Elizabeth, when was this? Director Klein, when was this?
Well, we sent this out last week, but these numbers are as fresh as hours ago.
You can recollect, Trustee Carabella. I sent some information to all trustees today. That's when I got the numbers and that's when I shared.
Okay, and then it was made into this presentation for tonight.
Director Klein, it's added today, right?
It it's part of this of this, yeah. We would add to it.
Okay, I will now go back to trustee. Any questions on this topic, trustees? Okay, let's go to trustee Murphy.
Mr. Chair and through you. My question is about the online learning. My question is, are students at our board able to take any course at any board across the province, or are there exemptions?
Director Klein?
I'm going to toss this over to Superintendent Del Sorto. There are proportionalities at each board, so that there is a that's I think it's a bit of a yes, no question or answer.
Thank you and through you, Chair. Thank you, trustee Murphy, for the question. When it comes to e-learning, the the beautiful thing about it is that it exercises a lot of flexibility for students to choose any course offered anywhere that's part of the consortium. So, for example, many of our students would take politics, for example, but there isn't a critical mass of students at a particular site to offer that as a complete section. However, if you have three kids at one school, eight kids at another school, through the consortium, we we are asking guidance counselors to put the names of the students on the list so there'll be guaranteed placement. If they delay, they're put on a waitlist. And then every school is asked or every school board to be part of the consortium is if I offer a course and there are 30 students in that course, five seats of the 30 are held for outside students. And if there are no interest from outside students, then we fill it up with our students. So we have a complete 30. That allows us to have access to other courses offered by other boards, and therefore our kids could take any course. So, for example, if students are interested in taking Italian or Spanish or any other language that's not offered in their homeschool, they can take it at another board location.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, follow up?
Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, hand is up. You have a question? Good. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to know, what was the process for opting out of the the two minimum online learning? You said there's a process to opt out. Is it very simple or do we have to explain?
PPM actually speaks to the the process for it, and it's sort of expectations around it and simplicity and clarity, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Del Sorto about how that's actualized here at Halton.
Superintendent Del Sorto?
Thank you and through you, Chair. Thank you for the question, trustee Carabella. When it comes to opting out, the families can opt out at any time from grade eight all the way to grade 12. But what we're asking of families to do is just wait to their grade 11th year. Because at that point, if students want to take an online learning class, they can. Or if they say, yeah, I'm not really interested, they can opt out. So they can opt out at any time, but we're asking them to just wait to their grade 11th year.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Just follow up. So there's the minimum of two. Is there also a maximum of how many online courses you can take?
Superintendent Del Sorto?
Thank you and through you, Chair. Thanks again for the question. When it comes to maximum course, at this point, no, there are no maximum.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I do have one more follow up. So basically, a student can take any any core course as well, or are these mostly electives or are are core courses offered as well?
Superintendent Del Sorto?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, trustee Carabella. All courses, so core, electives, all courses.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Your hand is up.
Just back to the what's on the screen there. So are there any specific qualifications for a teacher doing AP versus other non-AP courses? Or pre-AP?
They need to be trained, but Director Klein?
So do we have to remove? Do do new teachers come in or do existing teachers get trained?
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Kroll.
Superintendent Kroll?
There's no, I wouldn't say there's a formal requirement, but there's an expectation, especially for teachers teaching senior level AP courses, that they've been trained by the AP College, by the College Board. So there's opportunities for both online and in person learning sort of during the school year as well as during the summer. In a situation like this, where we're starting up a program, often our strategy is to approach teachers, see if we can encourage them to take training during the summer through the College Board. Some will, some won't. We're certainly going to leverage every opportunity that we have to get teachers trained sort of formally by the College Board, but we have enough AP teachers within the system to informally train enough teachers to be able to get this off the ground for for September. Again, because this is only because it is grade nine, it isn't, it is pre-AP, it's our own program. We feel confident we can prepare teachers in time for that.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
If I can just make one additional. We would be training these teachers regardless, whether they're at Bishop Reading or St. Kateri. Right? We have to train these teachers because we have this has such a high demand for this program. So it's really not a matter of can we get the training done is we don't have a choice but to get the training done because the demand is there for students. So it really doesn't matter where this where this program ends. If there is, we'll have to train those teachers regardless.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
It's just regarding summer school, just wondering. So last year, I believe we sent a survey out to students to see which students wanted online summer school or in person. And it was all online. Did we do that survey this year to give people the choice to have their voice heard?
I believe I have the answer, but I'll turn that over.
Director Klein?
Thank you. Chair to Superintendent Del Sorto.
Superintendent Del Sorto, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. This year, we did not survey the students because we had two years where it was highly recommended. Plus, we've noticed that our IE online learning. And we've also noticed that our enrollment for summer school has increased to 4,000 students. And so we couldn't really think of physically being responsible to use a lot of the people power, the human power, to do a survey that we've done for two years that we know there isn't any interest. Plus, kids could go to their guidance counselor to say that they want face to face, and we have a guidance counseling meeting where we look at what are some of the issues or barriers and what we can remove. And no guidance department came to us with any of those recommendations of face to face.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Just a follow up. So last year, I think we went down 10% online or of summer school, but this year we're expecting an increase.
So last year, we went down from 6,000 and we went down, but that was because of COVID that there were people weren't allowed to really travel, so they they took summer school. When the travel ban was lifted, that's when we noticed a decline. But what I mean by we've increased or doubled from face to face, when we used to offer face to face before we did online, we had smaller numbers of kids going face to face. But online, it's increased to almost 4,000. So far. It could always and it fluctuates. They might not show, right?
You have another question?
Just lastly, just so if any students do want in-person summer school, do they get that? Can they go to the public? Do they have at the public board or co-terminus board in person?
Superintendent Del Sorto?
And can they do that? Are they allowed?
Superintendent Del?
Thank you, Chair and through you, Chair. Thanks for the question. I'm not aware of our co-terminus board offering a face to face. I am aware that they had said early in the school year that they were not going to offer it, but again, I'm not sure if that changed. If you're asking us, can any of our students go to their board? Absolutely. Absolutely. We, of course, don't encourage that, but absolutely.
Okay, I hear that trustee Kennedy does not have any further questions. So Director Klein, I see. Oh, trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
One last question. I don't know the boundaries off the top of my head in Milton of who goes where and who flows into what school. But with that in mind, I'm wondering, do we? I don't know how this works, but is there time to get feedback to see if some areas of Milton have families that are disproportionately affected by this movement? With such short notice?
Let me pass this to Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question, trustee Murphy. First of all, I don't think there's any disproportionality of what's happening there. The issue is that Bishop Reading can no longer accommodate this influx, so we have to come up with a solution for that that's sustainable to keep BR doing the great things that it's doing, but also provide the program that we offer here in Halton Catholic, the AP program that's so well respected. So we have to give that consideration. In terms of location, Kateri is closer to because you're doing the boundary. So you've got St. Francis Xavier further to the west, I believe it is. And then then it's Kateri, then BR is on the east side, right in Milton? So Kateri, first of all, it's a new build. It's got the space for it. So the catchment areas, it's closer for them to actually go to Kateri, right? Those families, it's closer for them to be there than to go right across, right? And all families have to provide their own transportation like every other AP program.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
I'm just asking because I still don't have this full picture in my head, so that's fine. I'll look into it more myself. Thank you.
Trustee Kennedy, I thought you were done.
Just lastly, are there any exceptions to be made if a student said, you know, I have my heart set on BR, that's where I want to go? Are there any exceptions?
Superintendent Denalfo?
Through you, Chair and trustee Kennedy. I think that and I know that it's going to be in collaboration with Superintendent Cordero when he's going to probably get some of those questions. I think we really do need to do case by case if there's some extenuating circumstance. But the reality is, is we've got over 300 students that are part of the St. Kateri and St. Francis Xavier wanting to do AP. And we can no longer accommodate them at BR, so we have to make a responsible decision so that BR can still run, and we have seen the pressures that they've had this year. And why not create another space for it? Because there there's a need. There's actually an interest for it. We we're not going to be able to keep it going at BR at this rate.
Thank you. I see trustee Murphy, your hand is up. Oh, it's just from the past. Okay. Trustee Kennedy, one final question. Oh, you have? Okay. Okay. No more questions here. So thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, Superintendent Denalfo and Superintendent Del Sorto and Superintendent Kroll for all providing information on this on this report. I have a comment here and we have we have concerns as trustees. We want to increase our numbers in our schools. This is the opportunity. This is the opportunity. The AP program in Milton has had phenomenal growth, which is a good problem for you, a very good problem. We need to expand this program. Time is of the essence, and we also need to let our parents know. We need to let our parents know yesterday. Okay, so because we need to plan for the next next academic year. It's absolutely critical to expand the program and all trustees. Your support is required to support this growth in Milton. Thank you. With that, we shall now move on to item 11.2, construction report. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. We have the construction report for April. And first off, we have Milton number three or St. Kateri. So you can see from the photos there, the roof is 98% complete, just some of the flashing going on around the edges right now. Brick veneers going on certain sections as well as the spray insulation going on the walls as well on the exterior. Lots of work going on inside. The bottom right photo was one of my more encouraging ones at the library there. It looks like a library now. You've got some paint in there and some lighting going in. So really taking shape inside. Next month, still some exterior work going on with the the building envelope, and then a lot of work ongoing inside of mechanical, electrical, and then a lot of the interior finishes. And then next, we have built in number nine. You can again see from the photos there, the roof is on now. We have the EVB and brick veneer starting this month. And then the interiors are pretty well advanced there with some some T-bar ceiling already in and a lot of the mechanical work already done in the in the school. For the next month, we have some sections of curtain wall, especially in the front of the building that are scheduled to arrive and will get us fully enclosed, and then continuing work on the interiors. And then lastly, we have Oakville number four. You can see from the photos here, this building is almost fully enclosed, a couple of small little pockets left open, but for the most part, fully enclosed, and we've shifted all around to the interior. You can see millwork going in. Our our fan coil boxes already showed up there, so you see in the bottom rights are some ray tracking that's going in and some plumbing fixtures going into that school as well. So really shifting to the interior finishes in the next month. And we also have some landscaping going on as the as the weather will improve. So all three projects making great progress and looking good for September openings on all three. So I have to take any questions the trustees have on those three construction projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick for presenting your report. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Saying none. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for presenting your report. We shall now move on to item 11.3, 2023-24 budget. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Please find attached everyone our 2324 budget report ending February 29th of 2024. I'd like to draw our attention to a couple of items or some items, a couple more than one. We made an adjustment to our bank interest, although we've been estimating substantially higher than the previous year. The timing delay in some capital projects has made us to make a conservative adjustment to our working paper and to our revenue. Tuition fees have increased due to ISP students increasing from 269 from 124. Other revenues, so provincial grants, so you might see a decrease there. And why is that decrease? Well, it's due to the timing of some of our priorities and partnership funding, our PPFs. Specifically tutoring, we lost about 1.7 million or so there. School connectivity about 0.3 million or 300,000. ESL about 700,000 in 20 from 2223. Now, this has been offset by additional revenue of a million or so for grade 9 de-streaming as well as reading intervention of $300,000 in 2324. Amortization amortization of deferred capital contributions, this has decreased due to less capital assets in 2324 relative to 23. And school generated funds, you can see that that's growing as well. So it's increased due to timing the funds receive. But these are funds primarily relating to field trips, launch pizza days, athletic fees, fundraising, things like that. The expenses, well, our expenses aren't going as anticipated, so you can see that our expenses are within the range of that 50 to 60% during depending on what what level it is, whether it's a school-based or whether it's a 12-month expenditure. One thing to mention is that we're currently tracking towards a compliant deficit. Staff will continue to monitor this and provide an update in June when additional information is known. Now, there is a concern I've mentioned before, Bill 124, what the impact of Bill 124 is going to be for us. So we're still trying to get that determination, but once we do, we can bring that to trustees as well. Mr. Chair, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Loft? Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, how much do we expect? What's your estimate right now to be over? So we're going to be compliant. That's was at 1%? Which is, is that 5 million? And how close to the edge of that are we going to be?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to to trustee Kennedy, 25 basis points, as we're looking at. So about a million dollars.
As of for June?
As of as of the end of year right now, but the one part that we're still unsure of is that Bill 2124 impact and how it's going to impact us on the compliance. So there's still discussions as well. So I'm being, I'm not going to say I'm being conservative on the on the 25 basis points or 1 million dollars at this point in time. So we'd have a better, more clear understanding where we're going to be in June. But we have looked at different ways to to add back to that budget. Trustee Kennedy can adjust budgets accordingly. So we've asked senior staff to kind of look at where we're at right now and make adjustments, which we have done. So that's what I'm saying conservatively. I'm going to go drink. I'm kind of that's what I'm saying conservatively at the 25 basis points.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
So if it is a million, where would we take that from the reserves? Would that be operating reserves or capital somewhere else?
Superintendent Loft, through you, Mr. Chair, that would be capital or sort of capital. No, it would not be capital. It would be operating.
Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
This is a follow up. So so our our operating reserves, I think, are 4.7 million. That would be 3.7. And it was 8 million the year before, and it was 12 million. So if we don't have any operating reserves next year, how do we operate?
Superintendent Loft, through you, Mr. Chair, we'll still have reserves, trustee Kennedy. We still have the capital reserves, so they can always be reallocated. So that Ryan doesn't like to hear that, but it can be worst case catastrophic problems that is still available to us. As well as we have some adjustments to in WSIB on our reserves as well. So as we know, our WSIB cost, we can kind of probably, not probably, it's gone up tremendously, as we've discussed before. And we do have about three or so million dollars in WSIB on our books right now as a reserve as well. So I could take a
Trustee Saunders, you have the floor?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Loft. Can you just remind me, the a compliant deficit, is that within 1%? So that's approximately 5 million dollars?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent Lauts? To you, trustee Saunders, no, it's about 4 million dollars, so 1%, you're correct. A compliant would be the 4 million or 1% of our operating or operating budget through funding through the ministry.
So my next question was, I remember until quite recently, we were, we were sort of announcing that we had a balanced budget. So now, we are now into a compliant deficit. How confident are we that we're not going to slip into a non-compliant deficit?
Superintendent Lauts? Through you, Mr. Chair. And that's just us bringing, being upfront and saying that this potentially could be, we don't know as of yet if we are going to be one. We won't know that till year end, it's just where we're tracking. How confident are we? I mentioned Bill 124, trustee Saunders, because the impact of Bill 124 is something that we have been unable to, to really get that nailed down as far as what the impact to us. It's something that we're working with the ministry as most boards, not most, all boards are in the province. And really, that's something outside of this, of this board's control is going back to something that we really didn't have. And we're kind of creating or re-ysizing something that really wasn't on our horizon. Something that's being implemented on us.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
On page 124, or three of three.
Can we have that page up, please? Thank you.
That's three of three. That's one of three right there. No, it's just the two more pages. Right there, conclusion, third line. Yeah, just wondering, so it says at this time, it's anticipated we'll have a compliant deficit due to lower than projected interest income. I'm just saying, why, why are we attributing it to lower than projected interest income? Like, we over-budgeted interest by a million dollars, it looks like. So that's really our budgeting. Why not all the other things that are costing more? Why are we saying it's only that? Because there's like 17 other things it could be.
Correct. Superintendent Lauts, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, you are correct, it could be other things. We just, the change, the substantial change between last time and now is interest income, which is why we, we put that in to draw attention to that fact. So if all things being equal and we're roughly, we're kind of on track with the exception of that right now, give or take 100,000 or so here and there. That's why I put that in, to be honest.
Trustee Saunders, can you turn your mic off, please, if you're not speaking? Trustee Kennedy, do you have another question? Go ahead. Can you turn your mic on, please?
So for, for grants, I'm just wondering, so it was like, on the ministry website, there's, there's various grants that we get. Language grants, special education, special education, and it looks like they're going to update it probably in a few days. Where does that fall under on revenue?
Superintendent Lauts?
Is it just line two?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Maybe I'll address the grants for the coming year. So we still haven't received everyone, this is actually a good segue into that. We haven't received the GSNs yet. So I have no information to update everyone on. I know we, we've been told that there might be a change some sorts to it, but we just don't have that information yet. So we're still waiting on the GSNs. Having said that, going back now to we look on page legislative grants. So it's in the legislative grants. Municipal taxes also too, it kind of combines, if you combine municipal taxes and legislative grants, that's essentially what our GSN is going to be for the upcoming year. But I think I've mentioned this before, I'll just remind everybody again, let's say we got $1 in municipal grant, I'm being extreme here. That means that our legislative grants then would make up that difference to come to that same total. So hopefully that helps a bit.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
I'm just regarding, so on the ministry website, I'm just thinking, I think we talked about it before, indigenous education grants, up like 1.3 million. There's been some articles in newspapers, TDSB getting grants, certain online papers, they were saying that the average student, I don't know if it affects us too, got about $1,200 per student for indigenous education courses. Is that, is that the case? And if so, does it come out of another area? Because they're backing it out and adding it somewhere else, because it's, that would be like 4.5 million for grade 11 English. Or 4.2 million, are we, are we getting that?
Superintendent, Superintendent Lauts?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. We did get a substantially, you saw there, it's the 1.5 million or so, we got the indigenous grant. Sorry, I'm going off memory on this one. Is it, okay. Now, that was a it was something that we received this year. We're, we're unsure if we're going to be getting the same amount going forward. I'm thinking we might, that's the one I've mentioned before, we, if we don't spend it, we put it into a deferred revenue account and we reserve it for upcoming years. It used to be, and I'm going to get, I don't want to get too technical, but it used to be that, or not, it is that the ministry, to encourage the indigenous classes, if we had a class below 23, so, so outside the GSN, there would be a, an amount to adjust it up to whatever it is to basically fund us that difference, so we can offer the class and fund us up to that 23 students. So we would receive an additional amount for that. And that might be what, I'm sorry, I don't have the articles, I'm not really sure, but the funding that they quoted, but that might be what they're relating to, but I really don't know, trustee Kennedy, for sure. So I know that it's to encourage the classes, that if we had 12 students in it, that they would then fund us a difference up to the 23, the one.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Thank you, Superintendent Lauts. Still have another question? Okay, let's take a question.
So just regarding international students, so it looks like that's tuition revenue, we had a great presentation here, included international students. So that seems like a substantial increase, 2 million extra. I know there's some costs there, we have like three people in the program. But, you know, 2 million, and then we looked at how much the ministry takes 2,500, or they, they take something back, whatever that number is. But we went from 124 to 269, so we doubled that. Maybe, just, you know, with budget constraints and this million dollars for next year. Just wondering, maybe to our director, you know, what are, what are our director's thoughts on growing this program? And how can we, how can we do that? How can we promote this program if it's bringing in additional tuition revenue?
Superintendent?
Something we want to do.
Superintendent Lauts, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. The numbers have doubled, I, I, sorry, we didn't add it in there, but it's went from like 124, so last year, to 269, so it kind of makes that difference up, right? That makes sense that it's got double, approximately double. There is, and it's great, like, it really is. It's, it's something that's positive to our system. It helps with, with certain areas. The one thing though, and this is what we're looking at, is there's, I know trustee Saunders mentioned before how much were the international students. So I think it was about roughly 20% or so were international students in the ESL program. So there is that extra cost, so 20% of the students in secondary were ESL, but it's roughly 2% of the overall population base. So that's what I tried to explain, maybe I didn't do a very good job last time. Just trying to say there's more costs that might be kind of more difficult to look at. So I will say this, we are looking at it as we speak right now to kind of get a better idea to present to and bring to trustees what the exact amount is. Trying to take into account, something as simple too is, is portable. We talked about VR before, having 3,000 students. And sometimes growth is, is good, and it is, it's increasing enrollment is good, but if there's a significant cost associated with it, so for example, VR, superintendent Merrick mentioned all the additional costs that would entail by growing it and having it stay at VR. All the capital programs and such, not programs, but purchases that we would have to do for portables. All the additional costs for fire hydrants and all that, and washrooms and such. So sometimes it's not as simple as, as just saying this minus that equals this. We have to look at where the students are and what the additional costs are, and that's what kind of makes it, make it more complicated. I know, remember trustee Saunders mentioned last time too, that if it's just like a, it's a fixed cost, the staffing's a fixed cost, but it isn't, it's actually a variable cost. So that's the other part to factor in, it's been done before.
Thank you.
But I'm not discounting the, the impact, there is definitely an impact, and you are correct in drawing attention to that.
Justice Saunders?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I'm just looking at the summary in Appendix A, and a couple of numbers just sort of caught my attention. I'm wondering, you need to sort of give me a little detail on them. One of them is a, an expense called other, that we only used about 7% of our projected budget. We still have 93%. And can you sort of give me an idea what that is and why, why we're at this position?
Superintendent Lauts?
I'm sorry, what page?
Appendix A.
A1?
This is A here, I'm looking at the
No, just the summary. It's just the summary, summary.
Do you have it there?
I can, I can speak to it. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. So as you all know, there's still ongoing labor negotiations, so for the union groups that didn't settle their union contracts prior to us budgeting for 2324, the province had included a factor in their funding to us and asked us to put that money aside in a provision for contingencies, which sits in the other right now. So since we haven't paid it out, you'll see that there's little spending on that, that component, but that's largely what the other expenses makes up, is the provision for contingency for unionized collective bargaining.
Okay, one follow-up question. On the same chart, we've got something called other fees and revenues, where we've used up about 84% of our budget at this point. I'm just wondering, and that, and that's a dramatic, or a fairly large increase from last year. Can you sort of tell me what that is and, and what, what's, what's forced us to use so much of the budget halfway through the year?
Superintendent Lauts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. So with the other fees and revenues included in there is our EDC revenue, so the development charges that we collect. And we've seen an increase in the timing of collecting those this year. So last year at this time, we had collected about just over $7 million. This year, we're closer to $10 million. So, but again, that's, that EDCs is excluded from a compliance perspective. So that goes more for the capital that we're, we're dealing with, not, not for our operating costs. So while the revenue is good, because we have land debt to repay, it's not impacting operating when we're looking at compliance, but that's, that's the driver of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy? You have your hand up?
Yeah, it's still up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just wondering, so we're only about a million, which is, which is really good. I'm just wondering, like, I'm sure you're going through stuff to kind of cut costs, this, that and the other, but just looking at, like, because I've talked about it so many times before, staff development, senior, PD for senior staff. So that's like five, almost 600,000 above where it was last year. There's 60% right there. And there are many things you can do. But like, the PD days are up 35% from a year ago. Like, is there something that can be done, like, to get ourselves in budget? I know there was one, I think, yesterday, and we have the PA days, we report them, the PD days, we don't. You know, they're not required to be on the website, that sort of thing. So we're doing these, they're taking, it sounds like teacher committee school. They're being trained at lunch or another program, someone's going in to teach the class. Obviously, that could be a bit disruptive, but it's also costly. Like, is there anything there that can be done to cut that back?
Superintendent Lauts?
I know it's important, but so is budget.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. One part two to remember is PPFs are also part of, so PPFs, subsidies and partnership funding can also be used for, for training and development. So Adam, I'm looking at, do you have any?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. I definitely think like we have those conversations, sometimes we're bound by the collective agreements on when we can offer training, whether it's during the school day versus after hours. So anytime we can kind of push things out of the school day to not incur those costs, I definitely think our superintendents are considering that, but sometimes it's just not feasible. And I know there's been changes in curriculum over the last couple of years that obviously the academic superintendents can speak more to. But yeah, ideally, we would be able to offer this during periods that are less disruptive to our schools. And pulling teachers out of, out of the classroom sometimes isn't ideal, but sometimes we're bound by, by that as well.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Lauts. Another thing too, trustee Kennedy, is we've also done a lot of more online training. Like, that's one, if there anything good came out of COVID, it was that, or we're seeing it tonight, the benefits of it, right? Even on our own, our own meeting tonight. And that's one thing that we have definitely encouraged and has, we've had an update. So in past years, that number would actually would be substantially larger than what it is today.
Thank you. Do you have?
Just to get this last, I'm just wondering, classroom teachers, so that's a big, obviously a large one. And it looks like that is down from, from this time last year by about 2 million, plus benefits of 1.5 million. So 3.5 million. I'm just wondering, how did we spend less, how did it cost less for salaries and we just for teachers? Enrollment's exactly the same, like, like half, half a student off, like, how, how is that? How are we saving money there if we have the same amount of teach, same amount of students and we have a ratio of students to teachers? So do we have more students in classes, you know, keeping, keeping in mind that the limits? But how do you save that much on teachers?
Superintendent Lauts, through you, Mr. Chair, so it's within the budget, but it, part of it's due to the timing of the ELHT. We have those allocations and WSIB dues that came through. But another part too is it's more the alignment of our teachers and our class size, more so than we have in the past, kind of aligning it more to the funding. And we've changed, as we've talked before, with our enrollment, you're correct, we're static, I'm going to call us, we're stagnant right now, we went up one student overall. So we have gone up, but really, our year-over-year change isn't really that, that great. So to your point, it's a good question, but part of it is going back to, if you remember too, we did have a deficit last year of $5 million. So part of that is adjusting to the size of our class and aligning the teachers to that and our staff to that.
So would it be fair when you say align?
I see trustee Saunders is going to send up again. Trustee Saunders, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I'm sorry, Superintendent Lauts, just another number sort of jumped out at me just with trustee Kennedy was mentioning. I noticed, yeah, for this period of time, our teaching is down 2.6, but our occasional teachers and our educational systems are above 3.5. I'm just wondering, what, what's causing that? What's driving that?
Superintendent Lauts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And the simple answer, it's sick leave, trustee Kennedy, or sorry, trustee Saunders. Sick leaves is something we've talked about before, it's significant impact to boards, it's an unfunded impact to boards. So the simple answer is, and Adam has some more to add too. Go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. Yeah, so Aaron spoke to the occasional teachers from the educational assistance. So the educational assistants at our board are QP members. QP is the only union group that had settled going into this school year. So we paid out their settlements and now they're at their higher wages, so that's why you're seeing the year-over-year change with EAs that you're not necessarily seeing with teachers at the same time.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
The comment about aligning, so would that mean, to be fair, would mean there may be more students? Because in the past, I think we've had less students per class because of COVID, we did things. So would it be fair to say that could mean that maybe there's 28 versus 25 or 26? If we are saving on teachers, but our, our student base is exactly worth than one student, would that be an example of aligning?
Superintendent Lauts?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. I believe so, trustee Kennedy, yeah, because it was, I think that might be a, a good way to describe it. Yeah, it's, it's aligning, what I mean by aligning is how we're aligning our funding to how we're staffing our classes.
Okay, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and we also were more gradual with our moving, like, the class sizes back to what we're provincially funded for. So a lot of school boards kind of did a hard stop last year, whereas we kind of extended it over two years to see that drop.
Thank you. We have taken a good time to discuss this, about 25 minutes, 30 minutes, we have more business to do. Trustee Saunders, I'll give you a last question, your hand is, oh, you're done, okay. So trustee Kennedy, I'll give you a last question, if you, you know, okay, good. Thanks so much, trustees. Thank you, Superintendent Lauts, thank you, Mr. Cross, for presenting this. And we will now move on to item 11.4, 2023-24 capital projects as of February 29th. Superintendent Lauts, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustees. Mr. Chair, please find attached the information report, updating ACDSB's major capital project for the period ending February 29th, 2024. These projects are tracking as anticipated. Superintendent Merrick went through some of, some of our buildings this earlier tonight. So this report is being submitted as information for trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Lauts. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Lauts? Saying none. Thank you, Superintendent Lauts, for, for presenting your report. We shall now move on to the item 11.5, 2024 long-term capital plan. Once again, Superintendent Lauts, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, hello to trustees. Mr. Chair, please find attached our ACDSB long-term capital plan that looks at the capital needs of our, of our system. If you remember, last year around this time, we actually brought the full report, it was an update to the full report this time last year. I'd like to acknowledge Dylan Ganesekera and our supervisor of planning and Bronco Vidovic, our senior manager of planning services, for all the work it takes. You can see that the amount of work that goes in for all the work it takes. You can see that the amount of work that goes into this document, and just updating a document takes a lot of work. So this is not a full new one, but it's definitely an updated one with updated information. So I presented to trustees.
Thank you, trustees. Do we have any questions for Superintendent Loft or his team? Seeing none. Once again, Superintendent Loft, thank you. Thank you, Dylan, and thank you, Bronco, for your, the work done behind the scenes. I really appreciate it. Thanks. We shall now move on to item 11.6, 2024-25 Budget Consultation Survey. Dr. Colimer, please present your report.
Good evening, and through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to provide the board of trustees with the summary of the feedback that was received from our 2024-25 Budget Consultation Survey. As you know, part of the annual budget consultation process, we hold a public survey with our stakeholders to seek feedback on the proposed budget priority areas, and also to identify potential areas for savings and efficiencies for the next school year. This year, the survey was available online from March 19th to April 2nd, and it included various open-ended comment questions wherein the respondents were given an opportunity to give us written feedback about the various priority budget areas. In total, this year, we received about 1,113 respondents that gave us feedback. And slightly more than half of the respondents this year, at around 53%, were HCDSB staff. When we looked at the analysis, when we looked at the comments, we did a thematic analyses on the, all of the responses that we've received. And we provided the main themes and several subthemes per priority area. These are noted for you in the appendix, and they start on page 159 of your package. We've also included all of the comments that we received in the appendices, and those start on page 169. The, this feedback has been shared with the senior team and also with Superintendent Loft's team in Business Services, who will, who has begun to review and incorporate this as they plan for the next school year. Happy to take any questions about the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Colimer. Trustees, do we have questions for Dr. Colimer? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Colimer, for presenting your report on the Budget Consultation Survey. Much appreciated. We move on to our next order of business, which is miscellaneous information. Student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your update. I believe only trustee Deepu is here. Please present your update.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I will be presenting this report on behalf of myself and my co-student trustees, trustee Chua and trustee McGuire. I'll be beginning with the Achieving section. We held our March Student Senate meeting a few weeks ago, and we had some great clarification questions from our student senators regarding the new mandate for the NBE 3U course. And this gave us the opportunity to share the knowledge that we gained from the last number of board meetings with our student leaders and to basically prepare them for communicating this change with their respective home senates. Furthermore, two proposals were passed from our Special Education Subcommittee and the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Firstly, the Special Education Subcommittee proposed a social media campaign to increase awareness about autism spectrum disorder, and in doing so, to break any existing barriers that may be caused by stigmatization. We believe that this is an essential step that should be taken by our students, since it's beneficial in creating a safe environment in our schools. And they did this initiative last year as well, and it was a great success. Secondly, the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee proposed the creation of equity and inclusion-based presentations for students to educate them about the significance of this topic. And during the meeting, we also conducted subcommittees' updates to ensure that the general senate is informed of all the amazing initiatives that are led by their fellow senators, encouraging them to continue to work together to support their student community. We have also been receiving student opinion regarding our plans to form an elementary student senate, and this has been a great help in planning this project these past few weeks. As for the Believing section, in preparation for the quickly upcoming Catholic Education Week in May, our secondary school chaplaincy leaders are preparing for two Catholic Education Week events for our secondary students from across our board to engage in helping to connect them further to our Catholic faith and the importance of Catholic education. On May 9th, our secondary students from across the board are going to join their respective elementary feeder schools for our annual Journeying with Jesus event. Secondary students will help guide and mentor our younger HCDSB students throughout the day on the value of Catholic education and how valuable our faith is. Our Journeying with Jesus event serves as a valuable learning experience for both our younger and older students to learn from each other and journey together in the path forward with Christ. Furthermore, seven students from each of our HCDSB secondary schools will be joining their school chaplain at the Culture of Life Student Leadership Conference on May 9th in Hamilton, Ontario, hosted by the Diocese of Hamilton. Brought to you by the Family Ministry Office, the Culture of Life Leadership Conference will be facilitated with guest speaker, Mrs. Natalie Sonnen, part of the faculty of the Healing the Culture Ministry. Her presentation titled Healing the Culture will promote a culture of life, happiness, and virtue for each person based on the 10 universal principles of reason and natural law. Throughout the day, our high school students will be able to build their leadership skills as Catholic leaders through a variety of workshops and activities. And finally, as for our Belonging section, one important topic that many students are interested right now, as I mentioned earlier, is the new Indigenous course becoming mandatory next year for grade 11 students. So at our last senate meeting, we had a discussion on this topic with our senators, and they shared that they're excited about the course becoming more widely available, and they believe that it was a great step forward for equity and truth reconciliation in the board. They also had some questions, as I mentioned earlier, about the course's content and how it would support students in future academic endeavors. To ensure students are well-informed about the course, the student senate wants to work in partnership with the board to create materials to share with students about the courses. These materials will help to give students a broader sense of what the course is like and why it was chosen to be the mandatory grade 11 English course, so that students feel empowered entering the course. As students, we are very excited about this shift, as we know that it's a, again, it's a great step towards truth and reconciliation by our board with our indigenous communities, a topic that many students are passionate about. April is also Autism Awareness Month. This month has been designated to celebrate the beauty and diversity of the autistic community and the many contributions they have made to our world. We hope that we take the time this month to spotlight the students with autism within their schools and how they help to build up our school communities, as well as to reflect on how we can improve our students, improve our schools for students with autism. It's also Seek Heritage Month this April, and we hope to take time this month to recognize our Sikh students and the beauty and history of their culture. Overall, as a Catholic school, our faith calls us to be the people of justice and love, a goal being accomplished, polished by many equity-related initiatives happening right now throughout our board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Deepu. Trustees, do we have questions for trustee Deepu? For what, for trustee Deepu, sorry. Trustees, do we have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, trustee Deepu, for bringing your report on student and student voice to the board. Up next, we shall move on to item 12.2, OCSDA update. Trustee Ohan Chanada, please present your verbal report.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Again, I seem to be a broken record, but just talking about the upcoming AGM, I promise you, after the AGM, we'll have lots to update. So there'll be a directors' meeting during that weekend as well. So thank you for your patience, and lots more to update next time.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada, for your brief report. We move on to item 12.4, which is the Notice of Motion Amendment, motion previously adopted. It's APNIB program. It's for your information only. Our next order of business is open question period. Director Klein, have any questions been submitted?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Thank you, Director Klein. In camera, we do not have to go in camera. Resolution regarding absentees, we have two trustees who are absent tonight, trustee McGuire and trustee Chua. May I have a motion to excuse trustee McGuire and trustee Chua? Moved by trustee Powell. Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew, all in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. And we move on to our final item, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Carried, carries trustee Saunders, please lead the closing prayer.
This is a prayer from Pope John Paul II. So, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. This is also, we're coming to our fourth Sunday of Easter. So blessed are you, O Mary, silent witness of Easter. You, O Mother of the crucified one now risen, who at the hour of pain and death kept the flame of hopes burning. Teach us also to be amongst the incongruities of passing time, convinced, convinced and joyful witnesses of the eternal message of life and love brought to the world by the risen Redeemer. Amen. In Father, Son, and Spirit.
Thank you for a great meeting. Good night, everybody.